Okay, at this time, we're gonna have our public hearing. This is on ordinance number O dash zero five dash nineteen. This is amending an ordinance from R dash zero seventeen dash seventeen, which created a special district for the provisions of the Public Health and Service Fee to amend the date for the termination of the special district for those purposes. So, just to recap very quickly, this was the Public Health Facility Fee that was put in place to address the Erlanger debt of the eight point seven million dollars. We first thought it was gonna take three years to be able to pay this back, but at the time that we did the original ordinance back in August of 2017, we did not know at that time that Erlanger was going to forgive the past interest in expenses and also finance that going forward for three years interest-free for us. So that ended up saving us somewhere in the aggregate of a couple of million dollars. Also, we were not anticipating such a large collection rate as quickly as we've been able to bring those dollars in. So we had a, an opportunity before the tax assessment notices were mailed out, which should be going out tomorrow, May the twenty-fourth, to be able to remove that line out from the assessment notices, so everyone would know that that fee is being taken away after two years. So it will be one-third less than what we originally thought we were gonna have to do for each property owner. So this is a time, if you would like to speak on that in any form or fashion, we'd ask you to come to the podium, state your name for the record, and then we'll let you make your comments. Does anyone have anything to say on this public hearing, on this ordinance? To sunset the date, instead of it being December thirty-first of 2019, it will terminate 2018 as related to real property and April first, 2019, on the pre-build manufacturers stickers that go out. Any question, comment, anyone wants to speak on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll close out this part of our special call meeting. And at this time, it is six oh three, we'll enter into our regular monthly business, and we have the minutes from our prior meeting on May the ninth, 2019, that was in your packet. This information's also available on our website. Does anyone see any corrections or issues with the minutes from the public hearing from May the ninth? Hearing none, we'll sign these into the record. And then we had our minutes from our regular scheduled meeting, also on May the ninth, that was in the packets out front. Is there any issues or corrections or anything we need to look at on those minutes? Hearing none, we'll sign those into the record. Actually, I guess, we did have two public hearings. So we had two public hearings and then our regular scheduled meeting. I'm sorry, I got a little confused there. Any questions or comments or concerns on any of the minutes that need to be changed or updated, on any of the three minutes from last time? Hearing none, we'll sign this last one into the record. Okay, our first proclamation, proclamation on Elder Abuse Awareness Day, whereas older adults deserve to be treated with respect and dignity and to enable them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and vital participating members of our community, and whereas in 2006, the International Network of Prevention of Elder Abuse proclaimed today to recognize the significance of elder abuse as a public health and human rights issue, and whereas the National Center on Elder Abuse and the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission Area Agency on Aging recognizes the importance of taking action to raise awareness and to prevent and address elder abuse, and whereas ageism and social isolation are major causes of elder abuse in the United States, in order to reduce the likelihood of abuse, proper social structure must exist so people can retain community and social connection, and whereas preventing abuse of older adults through maintaining and improving social support, like senior citizen centers, human services, and transportations will allow everyone to continue to live independently as possible and contribute to the life and vibrancy of the community. Therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, Sole Commissioner of Walker County, do hereby proclaim that June fifteenth, 2019, is Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Walker County, Georgia, and encourage all of our communities to recognize and celebrate older adults and their ongoing contributions to the success, vitality of the community. Sign and seal the twenty-third day of May, 2019. Sign this into the record. Yeah, so Sheriff Steve Wilson had requested that we do this, and so Sheriff, if you wanna come up and we'll get a picture. Is there anyone else that's here for this one? If you would, any of y'all that wanna come up and take a part in this?
I would love to take a pinch, wouldn't it? Who's our specialist in the area?
Okay. Good evening. Good seat. There, we'll let you hear.
All right, on three, one, two, three, cut.
I think we've got one more behind us.
All right, on three, one, two, three.
Appreciate y'all being here.
Thank you.
Recognizing, taking care of our elders. Thank you. All right, we have another proclamation on Foster Care Month, and I know there's several of you here for this one, but y'all are so gracious to come and be a part of this every year, and we definitely appreciate y'all coming. Foster Care Month, whereas the family serving as a primary source of love, identify and self-esteem and support in the very foundation of our community, and whereas in Walker County, there are a hundred and seventy-two children and youth in foster care being provided with a safe, secure, and stable home, along with the companion and nurture of the foster family. Whereas, all young people in foster care need a meaningful connection to a caring adult who becomes a supportive and lasting presence in their life, and whereas foster, kinship, and adoptive families, who open their homes and hearts and support children whose families are in crisis, play a vital role in helping children and family heal and reconnect, thereby launching young people into successful adulthood. And whereas, there are numerous individuals, public and private organizations, that work to increase public awareness of the needs of children and the leaning, leaving foster care, well, leaving foster care as well as enduring and valuable contribution of foster parents, and the foster care system is only as good as those who choose to be a part of it. Therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month as Foster Care Month in Walker County, Georgia, and urge all citizens to come forward and do so, do something positive that will help change lifetime for children and youth in foster care. Sign and seal the twenty-third day of May, 2019. All right, so this is something that's very, very important in our community, and as it stated there, we have a hundred and seventy-two of our children and youth that are currently in foster care. So, who else coming up for this?
Come on. Very good. We've got our smiles on. All right, on three, one, two, three.
One.
One, two, three.
That one's for the New York Times. All right. Now, the honeybee festival did it. We have Mayor Andy Arnold in presence with us tonight, so we appreciate him coming and joining us. Whereas, a honeybee is essential to life and the commerce of the earth, providing essential pollination to plants and adding to the value of crops around the community as well as the rest of the world. And whereas, the city of Lafette brings attention to the importance of preserving the honeybee population and recognizes its importance in preserving the life of our community, and whereas, the city of Lafette hosts an annual honeybee festival on the first Saturday in June as a way to be a positive change in the community this year following up on June first, 2019. Whereas, the honeybee festival features performances by local musician, musical talents in areas designed especially for children, a barbecue competition, a baking contest, a metric century bicycle ride, a cruise-in featuring array of antique tractors, unique art and craft vendors, and provides an opportunity for local beekeepers to educate the public about bees, as well as exhibit and display locally-produced honey. And whereas, the annual honeybee festival is free to attend community event and attracts thousands of individuals who would not otherwise know about extraordinary opportunities to live, work, and play in Walker County. Therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, Sole Commissioner of Walker County, do hereby proclaim June first as the Honeybee Festival Day in Walker County. In witness thereof, I have upon the seal hand and calls the seal of Walker County to fix the twenty-third day of May, 2019. All right, so who else coming to the honeybee festival? Everybody?
Maybe all of them.
Because Mayor Andy Arnold was the featured act, right?
Yeah, my not being the actor. Features of the policy.
Thank you, sir. All right, y'all, three. One, two, three.
This is for the Washington Post.
Oh, absolutely. Something like that. All right, one, two, three.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate what y'all do for our community very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number four on our agenda is ordinance O dash five dash nineteen to amend ordinance number R seventeen dash seventeen, creating a special district for provisions of the health, public health facility and service, to amend the date of termination for the special district and for other purposes. So, we've had our two public hearings, we have advertised this in the paper, we've received no comments, no complaints, no concerns. So therefore, we're gonna sign this into the record to make eliminating the Public Health Facility Fee official. So here we go. All right, folks, it is finished, it's done. Yeah, I think that grows around the class of all the citizens. Being patient and allowing it to run score. Okay, we have a resolution, R eleven dash nineteen. This is a reappointment of Ms. Kay Thurman to, with her prior experience, to the Lafette Walker County Library Board. Therefore, be resolved, the Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, Ms. Kay Thurman is hereby reappointed to the Lafette Walker County Library Board for a term from July the first, 2019, to June the thirtieth, 2022, and we are very grateful for Ms. Thurman volunteering her time and energy and knowledge to make a positive difference in our community by agreeing to accept this reappointment as our representative for the Walker County Government onto the Lafette Walker Library Board. And also, we have a couple of letters here, one to Ms. Eubanks, letting her know that we did make this reappointment. We'll send that letter to her, and then also, we have a letter to Ms. Thurman thanking her for serving and letting her know that she has been reappointed. Okay. All right, this resolution, R twelve dash nineteen, I'm gonna ask Matt if you would be willing to read this resolution and give some narrative about this and what positive impact this is gonna have on our community once this is put into place.
Sure. Whereas, the Georgia Abandoned Mobile Home Act provides local governing authorities with the authority to appoint an agent to determine the condition of mobile homes in order for landowners to remove or restore abandoned mobile homes left on their property and provides landowners with the guidance necessary to efficiently and properly identify and dispose of abandoned mobile homes in Georgia, while protecting the rights of any owner, lien holder, or other interested parties by performing a due diligence, search, notification, and hearing process. And whereas, OCGA Section forty-four dash seven dash one twelve subsection six defines the local government agent as a person appointed by a local governing authority who is qualified to inspect an abandoned mobile home by demonstrating that he or she is qualified to determine if the abandoned mobile home is intact or derelict. And whereas, OCGA Section forty-four dash seven dash one thirteen gives a local government agent, upon request by a landowner, authority to assess the condition of abandoned mobile homes, and provides that upon inspection, the local government agent shall classify such abandoned mobile home as either intact or derelict, and provide documentation citing such determination to the requesting landowner. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that David Brown, the Director of Planning, Inspections, and Zoning, is hereby appointed as the local government agent in Walker County for purposes of the Georgia Abandoned Mobile Home Act. If that is not self-explanatory to you, what this has, this act that was passed this term of the General Assembly allows local governments to do is to assist landowners with clearing off abandoned mobile homes from their property. If someone runs off, someone is occupying a mobile home, and that person leaves and cannot be located, and they're in violation of some kind of rental agreement, or if the landowner on whose property the mobile home sits can't determine from records and cannot locate the owner of this mobile home, then the landowner can contact, in this case, David Brown, our local agent, and David can go out, inspect the mobile home, and determine whether the mobile home is either intact or derelict. If the mobile home is intact, then the landowner can file suit in the magistrate court of Walker County, Georgia, on, and obtain a judgment for the amount of rental value lost as a result of having the mobile home either unoccupied, or if it's pursuant to a past rental agreement that the, that the prior occupant is in violation of for some amount certain under the terms of the lease. If our local government agent determines that the mobile home is derelict, if it's in terrible condition, if it's not suitable for human habitation, then the landowner can file suit in magistrate court and get an or, a court order that would allow that owner to remove the mobile home from the property and obtain a lien for the value of that removal against the owner of the mobile home if that person can be located. So this is not, this doesn't involve any government action per se regarding the actual removal of the mobile homes from the property. All this does is allow Walker County Government to be a partner with people who own property and who are trying to remove these abandoned mobile homes from their property. Does that make sense? Does anybody have any questions about the mechanics of this ordinance or how this works?
Is there a dump for dead mobile homes with the data?
That I don't know, but I imagine that one who's in the business of a mobile home park would likely know.
But this is something that's been a great need across our state. There's a lot of mobile homes that have been abandoned across the state. We have several in our county here in Walker County. We've had a couple of our mobile home park owners that face this very challenge where they have mobile homes that are not haveable in their mobile home park that's taking up space, but they don't own them, so they can't remove them. And so, legislation was passed this year, signed by the governor, went into effect by May the first of this year, and our part of this, our role to play as local county government, as Matt indicated, is to appoint such a person to go out and make that determination to give that information over to the property owner per their request, and then that information and possible testimony could be utilized in magistrate court if need be in order for the property owner to pursue taking action that they would initiate. So again, as Matt indicated, this is the property owner taking initiative of this. This just gives them a resource of the county to be a non, what's the word I'm looking for?
Unbiased opinion.
Yeah, unbiased, thank you, an unbiased opinion that would be able to go and make that determination based off of their experience.
I'll also add, Commissioner, in an effort to maximize this, the impact of this new law in our county, we did yesterday send out letters to eighteen of the, perhaps it's the entire census of mobile home park owners in our county, but we identified at least eighteen mobile home park owners, and we sent them all letters stating that this law was in effect, that we were taking this action tonight, and that we are prepared to assist them should they need us or should they request our help. So they, they should be getting those in the next few days, and if they decide to use this as a resource, then that's something that we're prepared to help them out with.
Nancy?
Is it part of the Cove enforcement? Because some burned out or exploded or something, and I've seen those in wooded areas, you know, driving through the country roads. What happens to those? Because they're not part of a park.
Yeah, this would apply to any property. It wouldn't necessarily have to be a mobile home park, so, so any private owner of land, and they have one of these on, somewhere on their land or partial, they would be able to go through these steps and go through the magistrate court process and be able to try to get some action for them. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, hearing none, we'll sign this into the record. As always, all resolutions and ordinances are attested by the clerk. At this time, that ends our regular scheduled meeting, but before we open up to public comments from the audience, I want to let Robert and Matt speak on a couple of topics. Robert, do you wanna speak to us about Walker Rocks and what's going on this weekend down in the Cove with Walker Rocks?
Okay, this weekend is a, it is a family campout initiative in the Cove. It's gonna be very, very, this is gonna be very interesting. I know Joe is taking his daughter, and he's gonna test drive the outdoor, the camping experience with, with a five-year-old, so we're gonna get some feedback from Joe, but this is, this type of, we've got a series of events planned throughout the summer, and we're taking this Walker Rocks to a different level that serves not only as an attraction to people from out of town to bring sales tax revenue here for us, but also as an entertainment opportunity for local residents. It's very low cost, and then the next one is an event at the Queen City Lake that's gonna involve a movie, gonna show Jaws out there, and it's gonna be out on the water where people are floating around on floats and watching Jaws on the big screen there at the Queen City Lake at the dock. So it's gonna be a lot of fun, so if you will, watch Walker Rocks and see all the fun stuff that's coming. Thanks, thank you all so much for promoting this. We're up to, we're coming close now to six thousand people that are regularly engaged with the platform itself, and it represents forty-four different countries. I think that's pretty neat. I mean, we're, people know us, when forty-four countries are checking in with us regularly and sending us messages, I think Joe and Lacy, the three of us respond on there, we're kind of the behind-the-scenes on Walker Rocks. We don't have employees managing this, we have us managing it. So it's been a very low-cost operation for a high payout for the county. We're really proud of it.
Very good. Thank you, Robert. And Matt, I think you had an announcement, introduction?
Yes, he didn't know I was gonna do this, but I'm very pleased tonight to introduce you all to the intern that will be joining our county team for the next couple of months. Everybody give a warm Walker, Walker County welcome to Will, who's seated here on the front row. Will is a student at the University of Tennessee at Chattanooga studying political science and philosophy, correct?
Correct.
And Will applied through the internship grant program that we get as county government. He will be following our county leadership team around and learning about how county government works, learning about how concepts get turned into policy, and how people interact with one another across different departments within the commissioner's office, and different interactions between the commissioner's office and other constitutional officers, and he'll be able to take that experience with him wherever he goes in life. As you know, I personally view this program, Joe's gonna have an intern too, as our opportunity as a county and a county government to prepare the next line of leaders for the state of Georgia, and fortunately, in this case, the next line of leaders that will be coming up in our county. So I'm very pleased to have Will here with us, and y'all just make him feel welcome over the next couple of months.
Very good. Welcome, Will, because you're part of the team. And again, this is a intern program through the Association of County Commissioners. We were successful in 2017 and 2018 of getting one intern each year to work with Joe Leggie in doing our marketing and public relations. This year, we, we were awarded two grants, so both Joe and Matt both will have interns, and the grant covers a hundred percent of the cost of their being into this program, so it pays them ten dollars an hour and covers the employer taxes and the workers' comp. So it's a great program through the association, and we're very grateful to be selected to be able not only have one intern this year, but to have two. So that shows that we've got a great track record with the association. Joe's done a great job with this program in the past, and to be able to be one, to get two scholarships is a pretty big deal for us, so we're very grateful and very thankful to the association for that. All right, at this time, anyone that would like to come make a public comment, we ask you to come to the podium where everybody can see you, we can get you on camera, and if you would, just state your name, and we'll give you up to about five minutes to share with us what's on your mind tonight about Walker County. We just ask you to keep your comments and thoughts to local issues in our community and surrounding areas, because as always, say, we can't fix the national problems, but we can sure take a swing at our local issues. So anything that you would like to come share tonight, who would like to be first?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Dot.
In the Cove, the camp, in what facilities, I mean, what are y'all gonna be doing to keep them busy?
There's a movie, I think it's Goonies? Yeah. It's gonna be showing around the show barn, so it's gonna be up on the top in that area up in there, and then there's gonna be hamburgers and hot dogs and some roasting, some marshmallows, I believe.
No barbecue, no.
Well, they didn't tell me at time to do the barbecue, Ms. Dot, but next year, as this thing grows, I'll come out there and cook barbecue, I promise.
And my last thought was thanks all of y'all. And my last thought was thanks to all of y'all that helped with the center, they really enjoyed it.
Yes, and it was an honor.
My barbecue was out of this world. It's all I have all memories.
Yes. Yeah, back last week, the senior citizen day up at the civic center, Robert and Matt and a few other of their helpers stayed up all night long and cooked, how many pounds of barbecue?
250 pounds of it, and they ate every bit of it.
They ate every bite of it, because I was there helping out and serving and cleaning up, and when I got ready to eat, it's gone.
You never got it.
I never got any.
Okay.
So, hey, but that's a great problem to have. We'll take those problems any day of the week. I would rather it all be gone than figuring out, what are we going to do with all these leftovers? So I'm very grateful that it was all gone.
Folks, if you haven't, if you haven't had a chance to go volunteer for that event, it's one of the most rewarding things that happens in our county, and I couldn't possibly be more honored to serve those folks that have led our county and our cities for all these years, and it's nice to see them relax and enjoy a million, be served. They've been serving us for decades. It's, it's a wonderful event.
Yeah, I think, I had Sarah tell me that my best qualification was the garbage pickup at the end. I was an expert at cleaning the tables and emptying the trash, so we had a great time. It's a blast. I've participated the last three years, I know many others here have done it much longer than that, but I thoroughly enjoyed that event every year, look forward to it each year. Anyone else have anything they need to add tonight or want to add?
Well, while we're on this, though, and recognizing people, I do want to say, she didn't know I was going to do this either, but...
Oh, yes.
We do have a, an individual with us tonight who attended a conference with me of statewide organization, I'll just say it like that. And she was recognized as the Volunteer of the Year out of the entire state of Georgia for this particular organization. So for her outstanding work and her outstanding volunteer spirit, please give it up for Ms. Nancy Burton.
Well, hey, this has been a great meeting. We've had some great recognitions tonight with our proclamations, and we very grateful for each of y'all coming out and spending this time and getting involved in your local government and staying up to date on what's going on. So I hope all of y'all have a safe week and a happy Memorial Day, and we look forward to seeing you back here in two weeks. Y'all have a good week.
Bye, friends.
Thank you.[1795.88]